Nations under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
With that, you may be seated. Roll call members.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herring, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six. Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
We do have a form. With that, next item is to approve the agenda. A couple of things we need to do differently. Ms. Orange, if you want to go ahead and say what they are, I've got them here. But I'll let you do that.
We need to add item 10A, Twin Springs High School Government Class, and item 10B, Virginia Department of Transportation, to the agenda.
With that, we need to amend the agenda as presented to you. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved, Mr. Sherman.
Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeter's second. All very well, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Also, if you know, there's some of the chairs blocked off there. The government class will be here around nine o'clock. They're leaving Twin Springs at eight thirty, so we did reserve that for the sixteen, seventeen. None of them will be coming. Now, B. D. will be around nine o'clock. Do what they're going to do is we'll work them in those areas where we talked about. But the government class, they'll be sitting there, and I invite them to come to our board today. Anyway, next item is to approve the minutes from June twenty-ninth and August the third. We might want to separate them like somebody, I don't have been here, I don't remember. Was everybody here then? Both of them? Okay. If so, then we'll approve both minutes at the same time. Need a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-ninth and August third. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky's second. Any discussion? All very well, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is this expression period. I'll read this, and then we'll get started into the since expression period. The since expression period is upon the meeting, when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county and or organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up, Ms. Orange?
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close this expression. If you're here to speak about the tax levy, we will have a hearing on that. So anyway, you can wait for them, but this, anything else besides that, welcome to come. So here, open for simple expression. Anyone? All right. Unusual to have no one to speak. With that, we will close this expression period. The next item is a public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance and reflect the law as it now raises in Title 2.2, Chapter forty-three of the Code of Virginia. Now, we're doing, our procurement ordinance will mirror the state ordinance. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the procurement ordinance? Okay. No one wants to speak? With that, I'll close that public hearing. We need a motion to approve this as presented to you, board.
So moved, Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Addington, second. Any discussion? All very well, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a public hearing on a special use permit application submitted by Jason Barker for five, seven, two, Ambe, Cooper Road, Hilton, Virginia, Act Number one thirty-one A twenty, to use the parcel as a campground. So you have that, Mr. Gilmore.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all today?
Good.
Mr. Barker came in my office. Always been, I forget the dates here. Put an application for a campground up on Ambe Cooper Highway, next across from where Mr. Barker lives. And he paid his fees. This is a list of the adjacent property owners. They all been notified of the meeting and by letter. And they were, we had the meeting in the planning commission, and the planning commission went in and approved the special use permit. And if you'll look, there's where it is in the counties. It's all the way up past the AP Carter. It's on AP, off AP Carter, past Carterfold. That gives you a better idea of where it is. It's not too far. If you go to the second entrance of Ambe Cooper, it's on, you turn right and go down in there. It's very short distance down. It is agriculture residential zone. That's a top, a real view of it. The only thing that I've cautioned Mr. Barker about in this was that it is, there is flood zone in that area, and he needs to be aware of that, so that if it is approved, that he make sure that everybody is aware that they have to get the travel trailers or whatever out of the area, out of the flood zone area. And I told him he would have to get a BFE or Base Flood Elevation, so that we know how high the actual, of where the flood zone comes to. So if he wants to get us service put in there, we have to know that, so we can keep that out of the flood zone. There it is. In the zoning ordinance, the campground does require a special use permit. There's a definition for campground in the zoning ordinance. In the floodplain ordinance, the mobile homes or the travel trailers have to be moved every hundred and eighty days. If they're not moved within the hundred and eighty days, they become a permanent fixture which changes. They have to get a mobile home permit. And it's quite extensive what they have to do to make them a mobile home. But if they're not moved within the hundred and eighty days, that's what it amounts to. And you, these have been a ordinance approval to the zoning ordinance on campgrounds. There it is. You've got a copy in your folder. This was given to Mr. Barker at the time of application. That's about it. Got any questions?
Any comments or questions for Mr. Gilmore? I keep on working a little bit on this.
I found a few quick, eighteen new homes going in the county.
Wow. Good. Well, that's good.
Most I've ever had in thirteen years of being here.
Wow. Well, that's good. People want to come to Scott County.
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this special use permit? We'll come out of the public hearing, and we will vote. Need a motion to approve this special use permit as presented to you. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Sherman.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington, second. Need to mark it yours. Any discussion? All very well, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item is one everybody guesses is waiting for the public hearing on the tax levy. And as everyone knows, it's, a lot has gone on with this, and we went through some issues with the board of equalization. We finally got it done. We're here today to have a public hearing on this tax levy. The current levy, the current tax amount is eighty cents per hundred dollars says value. So I know there's been some increases. The land values have gone up. Everything is going up. And I know there's a lot of emotion with it. It's expensive, more for some than others. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Anything else before I do that, Ms. Orange? Okay. You're welcome to come and speak, anyone wants to concerning this process that we're going through, anyone? If you would state your name and where you're from and the county, so for the record.
Tommy Thompson, Boot and Robinette Valley. By the way that went up on my mind, I just want to give you a little rundown on it. Last year, it would take me two weeks of my social security to pay my taxes. With the way it is right now, it'll take me six and a half weeks to pay my taxes, my social security. You know, that puts a big burden on me. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I don't think it's right. And I think something should be done about it.
Did you get before the board of equalization?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Carol Blavens, and I live in Stanley Town, in Maine, out there. And I just wonder what is the purpose of the taxes? What do we do with these taxes? Is that on our way? What do y'all do with them?
We pay for the schools, pay for the sheriff, pay for garbage pickup, pay for... Let's see.
Roads?
Road. No, no. Tax dollar does not go for roads. That comes from the state or the federal roads. And why am I leaving out?
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections.
Public Safety.
Public Safety. Of course, that's the Sheriff's Department, too.
School System.
School System.
Court System, I mean.
Court System.
Environmental.
We have the budget. You're more than welcome to look at that. The budget. You can look at the budget. It's online. That shows you a breakdown of all of our spending.
I'm the computer killer. I'm the computer killer for my kids.
Well, it's on the county website.
Ms. Blavens. Ms. Blavens.
That shows where the money's going.
Spending.
It's a pie chart. What she gave her, it's a pie chart.
Actually, you know, I thought we'd come to see about, you're taking, what, sixty-five percent tax on it or something? I thought maybe that, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, I see.
Okay, well, they have assessed it.
Yeah.
Now, how they gonna tax it? What percentage are they taxing, and how they gonna get that tax amount?
Well, it's eighty cents right now. It's eighty cents per hundred dollars says now.
Okay, that's why I...
Eighty cents.
Is it lower than that? Can they lower it? Is it gonna be lower?
We're gonna decide here in a few minutes. When we get through this public hearing, we'll decide.
That's what I come to find out. You know, I'm like him. I'm on a big income. I might have a little money in the bank. But taxes is hard to pay. And I just, that's what we came over to check on.
I'm glad you came. You need to come.
I'm not into any of this stuff, and so, you know.
Right.
The only way I found out, the only way to find out anything is to ask questions.
That's right.
And I'm glad you're here.
That's why I come to ask questions.
And I wish more people would come, because so many people have an opinion without facts. You're here looking for facts.
I'm looking for facts.
And I don't blame you. You need to know what your money's going for.
We all need to know, you know, okay, just like the big, I don't know what they're talking about when they get up and say all that stuff, you know.
I don't think they know either.
It's comfortable though, and so we could understand it, but that's, this here is...
If you look at that...
All this is important for...
If you look at that, twenty-five percent of our budget goes to the school system, twenty-seven percent for the public safety. But something, people, this year alone, this year alone, the school system, we had to give one point two million more this year over last year. And so when I got elected, it was given four point eight million dollars. It's seven point two million now. So everything keeps going up, and I know it's a burden. It is. And we've got garbage trucks getting two miles to the gallon, and look what diesel fuel stuff has gone in. So everything is getting more and more expensive. Just to get a truck driver, we had to go up six thousand dollars on the salary, because you can't get nobody to drive a garbage truck, and you had to have CDLs. And I thought even at the price we got him for, this one, it was a good deal. But it's just, everything has gone through the roof on cost. And so I don't know, I don't know where it ends. If there's any fallacy in our government, it's always designed to get bigger. It's always designed to grow, and no matter what. And I don't know how you stop it, because with prices of everything, you know, at the grocery store, the gas price, everything's gone up. It's the same thing here. I mean, it's, you know, with the employees we've got, and it's very expensive.
I know that, I know that Lord takes care of everything, but we get to live here with the...
I agree.
He's, he's got a lot of hair and all this stuff, and I just wanted to know. So that will be taken care of a little bit later?
We are. We're gonna go out here in a few minutes. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak today. That's why we do this. That's why we have a requirement below to have a public hearing. And so that's why we have to do this. And so we don't have a choice. Every six years, they do reassessment. It's, actually, it's four years. We get to your extension. Every six years, we have to do this. So, and we get a, the praiser comes, they're, this one been in business nineteen sixty-six. They were qualified, they came, and we put it out, you know, for bids, and so we have to go through this, and it's painful. It really is. But you got people that's paying a lot of money for property, but I can't see it, but they're coming here. Like what Mr. Gilmore said, eighteen new houses being built. And so, but anyway, I'm glad you came. I really am.
Glad you came, dude.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Vicki Bowen. I also live on the main Stanley Town. And I'm, like her, I don't understand a lot of it, but it is very hard, you know, that everything increased so much. My property, like, tripping, and, you know, there's nothing new on it or anything. So it's just really, and I am on a limited income also, so, and... One other thing I wanted to say, I mean, I know the people that came around and assessed our property, they were not from around here. And I think we need to have someone local that comes in and does the assessments. Because these guys were like from New York or somewhere like that, so...
Regardless where they come from, they use the numbers that the county gives them. Last year, they met with us two at a time, and they were seeing what was happening with the assessments going up, and this would be happening, that people would be concerned about it. And they probably showed us thirty properties, maybe twenty properties, that what they were assessed for and what they were selling for. One was assessed to one oh seven, one eighty-seven. I know of another house assessed at ninety-three, went for one seventy-five. That's not fair to the people that's gonna live here. You're not gonna move away, but it's caused the values. And what they do, they throw out the extremely low and extremely high, and somewhere in the middle is what they go by. So I have a neighbor moved here from Florida, and he paid a lot of money for some property below me that I didn't, I thought would no other about that kind of money.
Yeah.
And so whatever's driving this, you know, it's, it's really not fair because people live here. You're not gonna move away. You're not gonna sell your property. I'm not selling mine. I would not sell mine for what it assessed for. Mine went thirty-one percent.
Yeah.
So I would not sell for what it assessed for.
And that's why, you know, I moved back here. I was living in Phoenix, and I moved back home, because, you know, the city life is so outrageous anymore. So it was, you know, it's just a big jump.
I understand. Appreciate you coming, Ms. Bowen.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I got another question. How can, my property be valued at a certain thing, and my neighbor's property be valued at half of our money? I mean, as far as the neighbor get?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Well, I mean, to me, that's kind of ridiculous to me, too. Somebody ought to be...
Without looking at everything on it, there's no way, I'm not, I know nothing about assessments or appraisal. That's not, you know, I don't do that, and I don't, nobody's board could. But anyway, I don't know why yours was different from your neighbor's. I don't have a clue. And nobody's board probably knows either.
I'm with that lady there. I can't understand.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
What? I'm Carrie Carroll. I live out on Red Hill Road, if you know where that is.
I do.
It's in Gate City, close to Gate City. I just wanted to address the levy, and I ran this ad in the paper this week. Something people needed, but I can't say.
I did.
But I'm asking for, and everything went up, that sale, the reservation boards met, that's all over. So nothing can be done about the values of property now. But what the board can do is adjust the levy to make up for this humongous, ridiculous thirty-one percent increase. That's ridiculous in one year. I mean, inflation's nine percent right now, nationwide. To raise the taxes, revenue, if you leave it at eighty cents, it's gonna go over. Right now, the budget's, I mean, the revenue's about ninety-nine hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars. They'll raise it to thirteen, I mean, ten million dollars. They'll raise it to thirteen million dollars revenue, or thirty-one percent increase. If you lower it to seventy-four cents per hundred, it'll be a twenty-one percent increase, and give you twelve million dollars. Two more, two million more than you're getting, than you're having right now. And sixty-eight cents would give eleven point five percent increase, which is still above inflation, and gives eleven million dollars in revenue each year. So what I'm suggesting is that they, that the board has the authority, as I understand, to do this. I talked to the county administrator, and I ran this in the paper, because I wanted the taxpayer to realize it's thirty-one percent. Because to be honest with, the ad that the county ran three times, I had to call the county office to get them to correct it. First time, they said it's a zero percent increase. I called, told them, I said, no, it's thirty-one percent increase. They ran it second time, put twenty-three percent, calculated it on. Finally, they ran it third time, thirty-one percent, which is correct. That's just too much, and I'm asking you all to consider that.
I'm asking another question. If you spread thirty-one percent over six years, what percent would that be per year?
Well, it's gonna give you three, it's gonna give you three million dollars more.
No, no, I'm asking.
Every year, you get three million.
What would be the yearly increase over six years? You can say it's five percent.
Okay, what is it? The thirty-one percent. Well, then increase it a little, increase it five percent then, each year. Raise the levy five percent each year, and you're still getting, this way, you get thirty-one percent right away. You can spread it out.
We actually have looked at having a county censors office to do what you're saying. And the cost of that is probably three times more than doing it the way we're doing it now. So we have looked at that where it would be done that way.
Well, I'm at the assessment. That's done. It's gonna be ridiculous, I don't know what we do, but you can lower the levy to...
Right, I understand. I'm with you. All right, thank you. And as a good, by the way, your math was good. I looked at that, and so you were...
Well, and I sent it to the county administrator and asked her to check my math before I published it.
And she actually bragged on you. She bragged on you, said your math was good.
Well, I helped her calculate thirty-one percent.
And we thank you. All right, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone?
I'm Michael Collins, about four miles up the road, Maplewood Highway. Work over at Commercial Land Giants. The assessment was, wow, it's done. We have some weirdo questions, like if you're Terry Kilgore's mother, it goes down. Your Albion Properties that own over a thousand acres, it doesn't move a cent. But my five acres, hundred and sixty-one percent, like, a little strange, but like I said, with that, board of equalization, they own two hundred and eight acres in this county? Board of Equalization? Sorry, not forty. Got my tongue tied up now. Economic development. Two hundred and eight acres. Own, down there with the break on.
There's not a few acres there.
Yeah. Let's see. Down there, close to where the Wino Westco building is, actually behind the housing building, there's ninety-one acres there. Couple of tracks are all broken up. How much money we making off that? Two hundred and eight acres? I mean, if we actually, with this no tax overall increase at point six one, sixty-one cents, that would almost be a million dollars for two hundred and eight acres. At the same rate, that's one point one, over one point one million dollars for two hundred and eight acres. Where the Wino Westco building is, that the state now owns, that's even more. So oddly, while we keep pulling our hands in the, in property, when apparently can't do nothing with it. Like, I understand it. If you actually develop the property, do something, generate businesses, actually generate some tax dollars, that'd be fine. But since they're being wasteful, then my tax dollars is gonna pay for that. On top of that, speaking of buildings, the building inspector, just talking about, there's eighteen new homes. I mean, thirty-two permits last year, all together. Would we pay him sixty-six thousand dollars a year last year? Or coming up here and telling you guys what's already in the books for his own, and who filed, filled out a paperwork? I mean, if those thirty-two permits last year were all whole, whole new houses, do about five inspections, so you got the foundation, frame, electrical plumbing, and since it's Scott County, we got mechanic. At sixteen thousand dollars, if we paid somebody a hundred dollars just to show up and do the inspection, but we pay somebody sixty-six thousand for only two hours in the office, because he needs to check permits the rest of the day? All year? Thirty-two permits? I mean, the most he's ever had was his second year, thirty-six permits. Least twenty-nineteen, thirteen permits. But we're paying enough for that. I mean, if we're an outs or something, it's how much we're supposed to, what we can, and combining what we can. I don't understand why we have golf course parks, non-park recreation, and tourism, three different departments, overlapping each other, doing the same job. Pay up the lawsuit. I mean, is there that much yard money to do that's gonna go on? There's that much tourism, we gotta spend fourteen thousand dollars to advertise the nobody I've ever met since I was realistic? Just my opinion. And then wages. I know everything goes up. My wages don't go up that fast, like this new, new budget. You want over half a million dollars in wages increases. Five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for it. Guess we're doing that awesome of a job, that the, what was it, thirteen, eighteen new houses is going through the dying counties. We've lost two percent of our population. We've been losing population since nineteen ninety. But we're doing awesome, aren't we? That's why everybody gets, needs to get paid more, and paid, paid over. Except you guys, except the board of supervisors. That pay stays the same. I mean, I don't even see where the kickback is, because I saw all y'all's taxes, they're opening up just like mine. You're not Terry Kilgore or his mother or Albion Properties. They're not even gonna pay you more in compensation. They just either believe you're inept, or you're paid somewhere else. I don't know. It's usually in a scandal, there's something going on, but it just looks like you're getting screwed like the rest of us. You gonna roll over and take it? And I'm no forensic accountant. Don't do anything like that, but there's just oddities, like clerical compensation, clerical board supervisors. It's gonna go up almost eight thousand dollars, on thirty-eight thousand dollars, but doesn't that fall under your...
No, sir.
...compensation? No? County administrator isn't supposed to keep up with clerical with the board supervisors?
It's a separate position.
That's what I'm saying. Why, why is it? Because last year, we paid you hundred and one thousand dollars. But again, do the clerical in here, too?
It's not for clerical for the board supervisors. That's our front office person.
Front office person?
That has a completely separate job description than myself.
Ah. But isn't your job description broke off by the state from county clerk? When he's got too much to do, you break it into county administrator and county clerk. Say, Virginia, I mean, we got twenty-one thousand people here. We don't have, you know, Alexandria. We don't have a fourth town here. Is there really that much to keep up with? I mean, our average yearly wages here is, what, around forty thousand dollars? But how much more is everybody making on the state?
For the record, Ms. Orange's salary, there's ninety-five counties, and she's eighty-eight. She's that far from, that close to the bottom as far as compensation. A neighboring county is making sixty thousand more than she is. So with the amount that, with the master's degree... So with the amount that, with a master's degree in accounting, the law degree, you pay more to get those people.
I understand.
You understand that, you understand how that works.
Those counties dying like their girl?
I don't know. I don't keep up with the other counties, that's what they're doing. But anyway, I don't know where you're going with your, your statements and, and questioning. But anyway, I think we, to maintain staff, we have to do what we have to do. We had to increase just to get a truck driver. Six thousand dollars to get a CDLs. Everything is more expensive, which I've done said this. And so, anyway, you, where else you wanna go with this? I mean.
Oh, this, I kinda.
Appreciate you coming, I do.
I kinda don't believe that, it's okay.
That's fine.
I know all this is rhetorical, because no matter how many things everybody says in here, you can do what you wanna do. I mean, we're gonna vote you out next time, but then we're just hoping that the next.
My wife is hoping you will.
Oh, really? I hope we cast my vote as I can.
Okay, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, I appreciate your help.
All right. Anyone else wish? By the way, I want to welcome the Twin Springs government class here, and so Mr. Vasey, you got them here. And we reserved some seats for you, so glad you're here. We're in the public hearing for the tax levy, so you're right, at a perfectly good time to see how things work. And people coming and expressing their opinion and thoughts about the, the tax levy, the assessment, the job descriptions. So you're gonna hear some things here, and hopefully, you know, help you all to learn something about how our local government works. So welcome. I do wanna hear from a couple of you, mentioned we have you on the agenda here in a few minutes, so we'll have you come up and somebody come up. Did you have two people want to speak, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thanks.
How long can y'all be here?
We'll probably need to leave about nine forty.
Okay, so we'll get you as quick as we can, so we'll get through this and get you out. All right. Yes, sir, state your name, please.
I'm Randy Gomrav, living in Corn Ridge, near Nicholsville. Somebody, maybe most of you probably know where that is. There's a lot of different things that I could say. I watch the news way too much in the morning. I say watch, excuse me, I read the news on the internet. And I know the, partially know the slay of our nation, how things are going, how taxes are going, and what you all are confronted with. I've volunteered here since I've retired for the mental health center and continue to hopefully help this county some. You've got a tough job. But what I wanna say about the reassessment is the extreme amount that it went up so sudden. And I think, I guess I might as well be very pointed and say, you all must look in the mirror and say that, as you've heard all of your life, all government is local government. That's a powerful, it's not exactly perfectly correct. But we can all say, things are happening in the nation, and they're not necessarily fair. As a matter of fact, many of the things that are happening seem extreme, don't they? So all we can do is our little part, which ends up being a big part here in this county. Because we can just all do the right thing from our own perspective. So the fact that our taxes went up so extremely fast, so sudden, it seems, maybe it should have been much higher to begin with or all along. But the correction is a little bit extreme, and I hope that you will moderate the level that it's gone up this fashion that's gone up. Because we can look at and say, and I, I agree, and I understand that you have a hard time hiring people and that you have to pay more. But all we can do is look in the mirror at ourselves and say, okay, we're gonna have to bite the bullet here and do the right thing here and now. We not responsible for what happens in California, or Texas, or New York, or along the border of our great country. I always brag on this county. Kind of shouldn't equate it to a TV show, but I say it's kinda like living in Mayberry. I think this is paradise around here. I think we live in one of the greatest places you could possibly live.
Oh, I agree.
I've lived in Knoxville, I've lived in New York City. I wanted to go out and see the world and experience it, and we're in paradise here. And the way we keep it in paradise is we look in the mirror and we say, okay, this is gonna be very popular, and I'm gonna have to not do exactly what I want to do, but I gotta do the right thing. I'm not gonna worry about what happens in the rest of the country. At this moment, I'm just gonna do the right thing for Scott County. So I ask you to look in the mirror and say to yourself, let's tighten their belts and squeeze the budget a little bit and be, and as I know most of you are, very conscious of people who are living hand to mouth and have very little money. And when you raise the taxes, I think we should all be able to keep our, our land. It's skyrocketing, and I'll, I'll stop talking now and just say, I hope that you all can say, can we reduce this, and if we can, let's reduce it and not go up in such an extreme fashion so fast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Very good statements, appreciate you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Good morning.
My name is Dennis Chris, I live over in New.
Say, say again.
Dennis Chris, New. And is there anything that could be done to reduce the budget instead of increasing taxes? I went to the assessment meeting, and they said that they were evaluating a lot of the mountainous properties, the same as they were property closer to town, level land. It's all evaluating everything the same instead of up or down. So most of my land is mountainous. My taxes went up probably forty percent. And I went to the equalization meeting, and they dropped it down a value of it. I guess because it was mountainous land, they dropped it down some. I'm just wondering, if there's anything can be done to the budget to bring that down instead of raising everybody's fixed, people are on fixed income, social security. I get about seventeen thousand a year. Here I am, if they happened to reduce my taxes, I'd been paying the whole social security check just to pay my property taxes. And on top of that, Biden, he's gonna be sending eighty-seven thousand our yes agents after people. And that's not gonna help us either. Pretty soon, we're gonna have a communist country, so it's gonna get worse if we don't get ahead of the communist in Washington. That's the way I feel about it.
Appreciate you coming. Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christina Hurd, and I'm from District Two on the outskirts of Gate City going towards Hiltons. I would just like to speak on behalf of everybody in the county. As most of you know, that I did work on, work with the Board of Equalization. And we only got to see like ten percent of the, the county parcels. And from the ten percent that we seen, I would say that seventy percentage, their property increased a hundred percent or more. We had some that were thousands and two thousands percents increased. And I just think that like, of the other ninety percent that we didn't get to see, like how much theirs had went up. I know like ours went up thirty-six percent, and the Board of Equalization, they didn't even touch it, because we didn't get them to come in and see it. So I'm kind of like on the same thing as you. Mine went up, but you know, there's, well, you know that everything's going up. But I just think that maybe if you guys could just, I seen the article in the paper where it had the different percentages, and I think that maybe if you could lower it, it would help all the other people who weren't seen by us. Because we did try to do our best and, and lower it, but it was, it was still raised, but it was lowered from what they had it. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? All right, we'll come out of the public hearing, and we will discuss and vote here in a moment. Lot of good comments, appreciate you coming and, and being a part of this. But folks, I mean, we're required by law. There are so many things that people don't, maybe don't see that what we're required to do. And like I said earlier, it's a six-year requirement, and if it's gone up thirty-one percent, it's about five percent a year. We could do that, but you have people that will have property that's damaged, that needs to get lowered. You have to send someone out to look at it. You have people that had built on, they didn't get their permits or whatever, they go look at it, and so it's gonna go up. And I'm not saying that was the case all the time, but I know we had huge increases. And so, like I said earlier, you know, to have a one point two million increase just in the school system in one year, it's about four hundred and ten thousand next year. So the regional jail, when it was started, it was six hundred thousand a year, it's over two million now to run the jail system. And so all this stuff is going up, and it's, it's not, and I hate it for the taxpayers, but this stuff has to be funded. We gotta do, we gotta pay the bills. And the way the school system works, it's done through a composite index, and they calculate that, the, the people higher, a lot higher than us. And then they tell us, this is your amount, this is your part that you have to pay, and there's no choice in it. And so we have to pay the bills, and it's getting more and more expensive. I used to be a government employee for twenty years. Government employees are expensive. They are, I was. And so, but to keep good quality people, and I know, Ms. Arns, I know what her salary is, and she's eighty-eight from the bottom. I mean, she's, you know, we, she's seven from being the lowest paid county administrator in the state. And so I know maybe, to me, she makes it has a good salary, our attorney has a good salary. But to get educated people, qualified people, it costs. On another board, where we hired someone, their salary's two hundred thousand a year, it's not, nothing to do with this, but it's on another board, and so to get them, you have to pay that. So anyway, we'll go into this, we come out of the public hearing. From the board here, any discussion or thoughts from the folks here on the board? I would say none. Anyone?
I'd like to address the comment about our salaries. We are pretty much volunteers, and we do a lot of work. You see us here once a month, but all month long, we're taking calls, we're going out and checking on things, we're talking with each other, and we're a very busy group. And no, we don't get paid much, but we are pretty much volunteers for the good of our county.
Sal and I serve on the act of board. How much do you get paid for that?
I don't get paid anything.
And it's, and she was president of the board, and the hours every month that she put in. I was president of the board once too. The hours you put in. We got accused to make a hundred fifty bucks an hour, from say, your two hours a month, or two or three weeks, getting a hundred fifty bucks an hour. And so the boards that we serve on, and just myself, I'm gonna take, I'm on the Lenoysco board, on the act of board, the Clio board, the Co-Rite Advisory Board, I'm on the board at Dunn Gaia and the Clinic. And all of this is not paid. We do get paid a little bit at Lenoysco. But we do this, we're required to send these boards. The regional jail, the social services board, that, the boards that these folks set on, PSA board that they sit on. What you see here is, is minuscule compared to the hours that's put in by the folks on this board, pretty much volunteer. We're not here for anything other than to make this county better. And I hopefully, that we can do that without being so painful to your pocketbook that we, that you can't, can't live here anymore. There has been, as far as the budget, there's sixteen or seventeen less positions in the county than when I got elected. We, we've cut everything that we can. What else do you cut? All the low hanging fruit has been picked, I promise you. So the budget committee, the folks that sit on that and go through that every year, they look at everything they can to try to lower the overall amount of what the budget is. Well, you know, the school system, like I said, when I got elected, it's four point eight million, it's seven point two million this year. Actually, it's, it's gonna, by this time next, it's gonna almost double. Just, and we gotta have, we got our kids here, we gotta have our school system, it's gotta be funded. Any other comments?
Excuse me, if I could. So the lady that asked where the money goes, Darrell has sat on the budget committee for several years. I mean, several years in the past. And this year, I got the opportunity to do that. I had heard Darrell say that there are over fifty different requests for money to the board of supervisors. Well, I found that a little hard to believe until I got the first budget. And I went home Saturday morning and sat down, and I counted fifty-two different agencies or groups in Scott County that were asking for money up front for one thing or another.
I'll get the question in there. Broke it.
Yes, and, and a lot of them have to come back. But there, there's, there's two things that the board of supervisors has to do. That's to raise money, and that's to keep all of our, all of our agencies, education, the, the safety going. We have to do that. Last week, we sat down with Davenport and Company from Richmond, who are financial advisors for the county. To budget for this next year, there's a rainy day fund that we have to keep in order to obtain financial whatever down, down the road. We try to, have tried to keep that at five million, a rainy day fund. We had to draw one point four, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, out of that rainy day fund just to balance the budget. But Davenport, our financial advisors, recommends that we go from six to seven million in that rainy day fund. That's quite a bit. We went to, Mr. Mann and, and Ms. Arns and the set went to Russell County last week. Dean Lynch was there. He is, he's the head man in Richmond over the counties. He's the acronym.
Baco.
Baco, Virginia Association of Counties. He was there, there were groups from all over southwest Virginia there, all, all the counties. And we heard the same complaints, unfunded mandates. We're mandated to give a five percent raise for education this year, five percent next year to teachers raises. That doesn't come from the state, that comes from the county for two different years. There's a, a lot of other stuff that we have to keep up. We had Cliff Mountain, those people, they, their water went away. Danny went up and visited one home, turned the faucet on, held a lighter down there in the flame. We had to do something.
All right.
We had to do something about that water. That was money that we managed to come up with, and it's being worked on.
It wasn't county dollars, really. We got it through grants, and it was not county dollars that was used for that.
And, and I'm gonna bring up something that I try not to bring up, but I'm going to. And Curry, you've been a bulldog on this other thing. And honestly, we appreciate you coming and, and presenting the way you presented. But there's one thing I'd like you to look into. The, the education, we have five hundred and sixty approximately students coming from outside Scott County to Scott County schools. If there is no reciprocal agreement between Scott County and, and any other county, Sullivan, Kingsport City, Hawkins, if our kids go that way, you have to pay ten thousand dollars tuition a year. Those five hundred and sixty kids, probably four hundred from Tennessee, I'm just guessing.
Three ninety-eight last year, it was four forty-two in two thousand twenty-one. This past year was three ninety-eight, and this year, I don't know what it is, come from Tennessee.
All we have to do is come over here. Now, I talked to a grandparent that had four kids, four grandkids in Scott County. It costs ten thousand, five hundred dollars approximately to educate each child in Scott County. Times twelve, or thirteen if you include kindergarten. Multiply that and see what it costs for one kid, multiply that by four that are coming over here. And he said, well, you get all that federal money back. If you look at our budget, we get about seven million from federal funds. And I'm guessing right now, I can tell you exactly, but I'm not going to. It's over a hundred and twenty from state funds, and it's seven million from county funds. Now, we pay taxes on county and, and state. That's where the majority of education money comes around. We're paying taxes on it. Federal is a drop in the bucket. But that's the reasoning. What I would like to see is a breakdown of, if, if we started charging a tuition for the students coming over, the way all the other counties do, up to ten thousand dollars a year, you can check it. How much would that affect us? a year, you can check it, how much would that affect us? I don't think, Curry, please, and I'm sorry, Danny, that I don't take as much time.
Do the science if we're charging.
School board.
It's a school board, we have nothing, we don't control the school board at all.
Okay, so Sal will go.
When I first came on the board, we asked for the number of kids that were in Scott County from Alice, Alice County, FOIA, and, and they would not honor the FOIA, so.
Was that legal?
We did, we did the second time, the second time with the company, to the company attorney's office, and they, we got it.
But I just wanted to bring all this stuff up to let, to let you know that, that we're pretty much, this group is pretty much on top of the budget, but there's just a lot of things out there that we have to deal with, fifty-plus requests for money, and, and ma'am, that's where, I've got the list here somewhere that I made out that Saturday morning, but there's a whole lot of stuff that we find that people don't even think about. But I appreciate your time, sorry to take up so much time.
And Mr. Brickley, he was the principal of Gay City High School, working in the school system, so he's very well up and aware of what it takes to run, it's expensive to run a school system, and I, and I, we gotta fund our schools, we got our education is the top priority to me to get done, but still, we, we have to be as careful as we can about what we spend, thank you, Mr. Brickley. Anyone else want to speak?
Could I ask first of all my last, does that play a role in your revenue? How much money is treasure not paying for the levies taxes?
Good question for another, it's a good question for another time, but.
But, I mean, I'm just throwing it out.
I'm saying, believe, believe me, that's, this lady right here, Ms. Agathon, has, well, let's save that for another time, let's get on with this, and so, anyone else here?
Yeah, I'll speak a little on the tax levy, Danny, I think that the reassessment bunch, I think they went a little overboard, is my opinion, on the taxes, and I think the reason they did is because people moving in here from California, New Jersey, New York, all these places, and they're paying ridiculous prices for land, which is causing our land value to go up. So, we can't do nothing about the equalization board, we didn't have nothing to do with it, it was all what they did, and, I mean, the reassessment board, I keep getting them mixed up, but, in my opinion, the only thing we can do is change the tax.
Tax levy.
Levy. And my opinion is, to help the citizens out, we should lower the tax levy what we can, and think it's safe that we can get by, whatever the amount that would be, that is my suggestion to the board.
One thing keep in mind, one penny is a hundred and sixty thousand, is that correct, Ms. Darnes? One penny is a hundred and sixty thousand, so, you can take it from there, so, yeah. Anyone else?
You know, something we gotta remember too, is, you know, there's gonna be some other, you know, our personal property taxes are gonna go up too, you know, so there's gonna be some extra money that we didn't have last year, we're, we're gonna have some money from the casino, I don't know how much that'll be.
That's not till the next fiscal year.
Okay, but that, that, that is coming.
It is.
You know, I, I, I agree with Darrell, you know, we, we, we can't, there's, there's a lot of people that's living paycheck to paycheck, and you know, to increase, you know, speaking for myself, you know, I, you know, my, my taxes went up ninety-eight percent, you know, and I didn't go to the equalization board, because I looked for myself and I saw what the mistake was, well, I'm not saying it's a mistake, but over the last years, my taxes hadn't went up, you know, in, in a six, even a twelve-year period, you know, we've got to come up with some sort of a plan to look at the levy every single year, instead of waiting for, or like you said, we get an extension for the six years, and increase it as needed, instead of waiting that six years and increasing a big amount. You know, everything goes up, I mean, that's just, that's the, that's the game, I guess. So, but instead of, instead of increasing all at one time, you know, I, I'm not an economist or nothing like that, but, you know, if, if, if we took the deficit from last year, that was, I heard somebody, is that one point four million?
It was almost one point seven.
One point seven. If, if, if we could look at that deficit and, and, and go down to that sixty-one cents, and then increase that to cover the deficit, and get us back on track, and then every year, look at this, and if it needs to be increased, we increase it, and I've, I've talked to a lot of people, you know, I, you know, I had an idea of just go ahead and increase in a penny a year, or maybe two, and then when the six years comes up, then if we can lower it, lower it, if we can't, then we, we go from there, but that, that, that keeps us in balance, I feel like, you know, instead of waiting that long period of time, but anyway, it, we need to lower the rate, just like Darrell said, and then increase it, in my opinion, enough to cover the deficit, and then we start from there, and if my math, I'm not a mathematician, but that, that would have been around maybe sixty-nine to seventy cents, I, I don't, I don't know if that's right or not, I hope that you don't have, that's not right, okay, so, but, so even, even if we had it at seventy cents, and then we, that, that, that wouldn't cover the one point four million deficit for this year, and then we look at it again next year, and increase it, you know, we already know the school system's going up, everything else is going to go up too.
If you go below seventy-six cents, you will be in the negative with this year's adopted budget.
With this year, so, so, so it'd have to be at least seventy-six cents for.
To cover.
To cover the budget.
The number I have in mind, y'all, and the six of you others here, is seventy-eight cents, and there'd be, there'd be a two-cent cut, there'd be three hundred and twenty thousand on the bottom line, so that was my thoughts on this, Mr. Lord, seventy-eight cents. Seventy-six cents to break even, then the two cents would add maybe to our reserve a little bit, and so that was, is my thoughts on it. Anyone else on the board?
According to his figures, if we went to seventy-four cents, we'd make, be making two millions, something more, right?
If you go to seventy-four cents, your fiscal year twenty-three budget will be in the negative a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, does that count the school rates?
Yes, that's, as your adopted budget will be in the hole, a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Then your personal property is gonna get another million, two hundred thousand.
That is all included in your adopted budget.
It's all in there.
It's all in there.
All right.
Yeah. And we look at it from every angle, folks, try to, to make this work for everybody, and still finance and manage this county, so it's tough. Anyone else?
I'll just say real quickly, there's no waste, there's no fat in the budget, and it is what it is, real estate and personal property are our main sources of revenue. I've heard seventy-six, and I've heard seventy-eight, all throughout seventy-seven cents.
Alright, any other comments? Alright, we will, there's no other comments, we'll put it out for a vote, as to why we're gonna set the tax levy at, for this, this coming, this, we've already done the other taxes, all the other, the personal property, the machinery and tool tax, was all done earlier, earlier this year, but this is the only one we'll be doing, is the real estate, which is currently at eighty cents. So, with that entertaining motion to set the tax rate at whatever you all say, in my, like I said, with, that'd give us two pennies to, to add maybe to our rainy day fund, instead of seventy-six, we go seventy-eight, but that's my opinion only.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, we said it as seventy-seven cents.
Okay, do we have a motion, seventy-seven cents? Do we have a second?
What, what is the break even?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six is break even.
And you do have a four hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase for the schools next year, so if you adopt seventy-seven cents, you're most likely gonna have to raise it for fiscal year twenty-four.
So, that's my fear.
Because you had the budget.
Because I don't want to put us into a.
That shows a million dollar increase for next year, the schools plus the other expenses we know were going up.
Right, because we have to not only think about this year's budget, but we have to think about what is going to happen. We've, we have to set the county up for success in that respect, right? We can't just look at what this current budget is, we have, if we know that it's going up four hundred thousand dollars, we need to prepare for that, we need to take into that account.
I think we're responsible for that.
It would be, I think it would be irresponsible if we did it.
And folks too, the folks at Davenport, we met with them, they recommend leaving it at eighty cents. That was, they've looked at our numbers, since I've been here, they've looked at that, and they, they are our financial advisors, look at everything they do, they look at, about the courthouse, everything is gonna be, they're looking at that, and so they're recommending leaving it alone, and I recommend that we, that we lower it some, we gotta do something for the, the folks in this county, and I'm sure all of you agreed to, it's not such a burden that they can't buy groceries, go pay their taxes, so.
But why, why, why can't we look at that on a yearly basis, though? Why, why, why do we have to, I, I understand the planning part of it, I mean, we know that it's gonna go up, but why can't we look at it on a yearly basis, and increase it a little, instead of preparing two years down the road, and having the money in hand? And why, why not look at it year to year, on a, you know, July to July, instead of...
How do you suggest to, to build that fund up, our rainy day fund?
Well, you know, we've, we've built it up to five million dollars on the situation that we are now, you know, when, when we first got elected, it wasn't that high.
Less than four.
So, I mean, you know, even, even with the funds that, that we got, we, we managed, you know, to, to, to build that up, and then, you know, I, I don't like to count our chickens before they hatch, but, you know, we're gonna have some more money coming in, you know, but I, I would.
Well, you made a motion of seventy-seven cents, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. We have seventy-seven cents, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, any more discussion? I'll for a vote, say an aye.
Aye.
Alright, I can live with it, seventy-seven cents, it would be a three, a three-cent drop from where the, the rate is now. Maybe it's not what you want to hear, but that's what, that's what it's gonna be, alright? Folks, been a lot of work went into this, the folks here with me, Amy, all of you, Frida, have really worked themselves, I mean, just about, just trying to get this done, and Christina, thank you all for serving on the Board of Equalization, you all getting criticized to no end, have one guy volunteered for six weeks, forty hours a week, for six weeks, and he was criticized for being on that Board of Equalization. And I think that's pathetic that people would do that, and so, anyway, thank you for serving, y'all done good with it, and so, with that, let's go on, I know that you all need to leave here in a few minutes to Twin Springs, folks, we get out in ten rules of procedure, a few changes made in that, in case, if you want to briefly mention.
The General Assembly made some changes this year to the remote participation policy, it's part of your rules of procedure that you adopted in January, so, those changes are effective September first.
Okay.
This year, so we need to mid-year amend those rules of procedure, so we have that adopted as it is in the country.
Alright, do we have a motion to adopt those rules of procedure as described by Ms. Capable? Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Ms. Agathon made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Ms. Agathon, second, any discussion? I'll for a vote, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, you got a few minutes, government class, who's gonna, by the way, I got, we got fourteen letters, who, who wrote the letter, raise your hand, wrote one of the letters, I read them.
They, they all wrote, wrote the letters.
Alright, come on, come on up here, so, whoever's spoken. By the way, I read every letter, and I think the board here did too, so, anyway. And your name?
Riley Dillon-Ward.
Riley?
Yeah. My classmates and I are writing to express our concern about the continuously growing weeds on Twin Springs Road. This current issue is causing harm every day when students, parents, faculty, and staff travel the road. Wrecks are much more common in conditions like this, however, the problem can be fixed, so that there are less danger hazards for all drivers that make journeys to Twin Springs. The main concern is that wrecks can occur and put people's lives at risk. When approaching or rounding a curb, the weeds prevent seeing cars or trucks that pass on the opposite side of the road. This would not be as big of a problem if the road was not curvy in new. Teenage drivers travel on this road often. New drivers don't have much experience anyways, so they need to help whenever possible. Thank you for taking the time of your day to read my letter. The need for mowing on Twin Springs Road is great, so we ask generously that you would inform whoever this may concern. Sincerely, Maggie Epple.
Okay. And with, there's fourteen letters, you gonna read them, not read them all?
No, I'm only reading two.
Okay, that's all right, go ahead.
Dear Board of Supervisors, I am writing to tell you about the weeds that have taken over the road. I've chased the same road every day, and it has become very dangerous. I can no longer see animals or any other hazards that could be along or beside the road, making it more liable for me to hit something. It makes the road look smaller, which worries drivers, they don't have room, therefore, they drive in the middle of the road. It also could cause damage to vehicles. There have been several times the weeds have hit my car, and even got wrapped around my antenna. It also makes it harder to see, seeing around curbs was hard enough already, now when turning or pulling out, I can't see cars coming. The roads have become very dangerous, and especially for new drivers, it would make our trip so much, make our trip to school so much safer if these weeds could be cut back. Sincerely, Anne Cudeman.
Thank you. Does someone else want to speak?
We're, we just got some more letters.
State your name.
State's great.
I'm not James Long Time, but.
I'd say you guys have already read the letters, I have, I've read most of them, and the real problem is just, the road is new, the drivers are new, everybody's new to high school, so, it results in a lot of problems with blind spots, you've rode Twin Springs, very curvy.
Yep.
Lot of blind spots, animals come out of the weeds, and it's the cars, and we, a lot of people are wrecked on the road, it's not very safe, we're just asking that the weeds get cut down, so, it could make the school safer perfectly.
Thank you, James, appreciate you. James Craig. Alright.
Thank you all, thanks for the experience and everything.
Well, VDI people are here, I know y'all need to leave, but they've heard your concerns, and if, just, just a couple of minutes, y'all would come and you can address them about this, if you, give us just a couple of minutes, if you would. I know you're in a hurry to get back to class, you can't wait to get there, these kids, just can't wait.
Well, I said, I enjoy this appointment more than.
Well, we're glad y'all come, I hope the other schools, RICO and Gay City will send their government class too, and so, it's a, you got some real raw experience here today, listening to what we go through as far as your taxes and what's happening, so, anyway.
I was, sorry, I was trying to hear from back there, but what route was that specifically?
It's the Twin Springs Road from Nicholsville, well, all the way through to Dunkin', and so, and we got fourteen letters from them, we got fourteen letters from them, and then I invited them to come and present today, so they have, and, and Mr. Bass, he's the teacher, and so, anyway, they, they, they came, and so, I knew y'all, it was gonna be an excellent time for you to hear, hear from them, so.
Yeah, first, I want to introduce Eric Hartless, Eric is our new maintenance manager.
What's that your name too, just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Wade Belter, I'm, I used to be the maintenance manager for Williams Scott County, and then I switched to Wyden Dickinson County, and the person that switched with me retired, so, I was kinda doing all four counties for a while, but, we've recently brought Eric on board, so you guys will be seeing more of him. But to address the mowing issue on, on Twin Springs, we can go out and take a look at it, but, VDI has a best practices manual that we're kind of, that's what gives us guidelines of how many times a year we mow primaries, secondaries, our best prac, our best practices manual states that we have to mow primary routes three times a summer, so, I think we just finished our, complete, completed our second round on primaries, and we're just beginning our second round on secondary routes, so, now that's not.
But any priority be given, like the RICO, and the RICO was the same way, and like, these roads these kids are driving, put that a little bit higher on the secondary, you know, it's a priority to get that, now, I drove that road, and I drive it all the time Sunday, and I, you all probably didn't really state it as accurate as it is, I thought it was worse than what your letters said, but go ahead.
Well, I, I was about to address that, you know, like I said, our best practices manual lays that out, how many times it needs to be done, but if there's issues in between those areas, I, I mean, in between those times, so we can always send somebody out to take care of side distance issues, that sort of thing, so, I'm sure, you know, that's Eric's area of responsibility right now, but I'm sure he won't care at all.
Go ahead.
Send somebody out to.
Yeah, we can get a, I can get a tractor out there, and we'll mow back the weeds and everything to, for side distance, especially for the animal shooting out.
Alright.
Okay. Y'all got what you wanted. You done good. So, I know y'all need to leave, so they've committed to fix this, and thank you all for coming, I know you got classes and you can't wait to get back to, and so anyway, thank y'all for coming, and, and any others, I mean, think about, you know, this, this is the government class, correct?
This is the semester's government class.
Alright, alright. Next semester, bring them too, we'd love to have them come and, and, alright. Y'all ready to go if you need to go, you can, I know y'all gotta, so.
Before you leave, I will also bring up that we have a, a hotline that's one eight hundred four roads. And complaints like that can be called in, and, and that will make it directly to the area headquarters that's responsible for that area.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Basically, I, sorry.
Matt, Mr. Bayes.
Yes.
Uh, before y'all leave, uh, you know, last month, we were, we sent a letter to Richmond. Uh, we, it went to, uh, it actually went to Terry Kilgore, Todd P. and our state senator, and, uh,
The Governor.
and the governor. Uh, I don't know if we've heard anything back from that or not, but it is basically based on funds, you know, that's what all this boils around, is the lack of funds. Would, would, would you all be interested if, if, for us to send another letter and we copy those letters, your all's letters that you wrote? Would that be okay with you all and send them, to them again?
Yeah.
Uh, I think that, that, that would show, you know, and I, I appreciate you coming, that, you know, we need more people like you all, you all are seniors and, you know, you're going to be out in the community, and, uh, you know, it, uh, but that's, if, if that would be okay with you all, if it's all, alright with the board, then we send another letter, if, you know, and we attach all of your all's letters to that, and send it, uh, again.
Our cameraman's giving me hand signals, I didn't, I didn't.
If they could switch that.
But anyway, I, I just want, but, before you left, I wanted to.
This all started, we, they, they were kind of passing early in the morning, this first block, and I was like, you know, it's a good, good opportunity to, to do some teaching about local government and, uh, and proper channels to take, and it's turned out to be a great experience for them, they give us a lot of material to talk about, especially after talking about taxes.
You know, that's, that's where it starts.
It is.
You know, it, a lot of times we look at government as, you know, you know, we need to respect our leaders, you know, our, our governor, our, but, but the power is in the people. You know, that's, that's where the power is, and if, if there's going to be change, it has to start with the people, you know, uh, so that's, that, that's how our democratic republic is organized, you know, that's, that's, that's how it works. And, uh, you know, it, it's, it, it's great that you're here and, uh, that it makes, it does make a difference. Don't ever think it, don't, anybody that spoke this morning, it makes a difference, that, that you was here.
Mr. Mr. Bayes, I would also like to compliment you and, and your class for taking advantage of the, uh, uh, teaching opportunity and, and the letters, I read every one of them, and and so very much appreciate you all coming, and it looks like that they would be pleasant to stay here for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah. Their second block teachers, nothing I like about them.
Right, I understand.
And one day I won't, if I live long, see, when y'all smiling faces sitting up here.
That's right.
Doing what we're doing, so prepare yourself for it, because you are, you, one day, some of you will be up here, I, I just know you will.
If, uh, if I understand this right, VDOT issued their mowing this year to one contractor, is that right?
Yes, and I'll, well, one, we've got one contractor.
Y'all need to go, Matt, you can, I mean, y'all need to go, we do thank you.
Thank you.
We have one contractor that, that takes care of primary routes for all four counties. Now, the ones that handle our secondary routes, they were all put out to be a, one contractor, one, three counties, and then uh, one county has a separate contractor. Uh, but what that, what that has allowed us to do by putting all of our mowing out to contracting is normally for us to mow with VDOT forces, we would have to give up five personnel from each area headquarters all summer long to go out and mow. So when you have ten people at area headquarters, you're giving up five all summer to go mow, that doesn't leave you many men to take care of other issues. So we have contracted our mowing this year that has let us keep more guys at the area he, area headquarters, so.
So you provide oversight to that contractor?
Yes, we have contract monitors and, and things that, that monitor to make sure they're doing a good job and.
And they're evaluated?
Yeah.
Everything?
Yes, they are evaluated.
Okay.
My opinion on this was, uh, I think next year, if possible, VDOT needs to spread the leases out on the mowing, because it was July before they mowed the first time down in Yuma, and I think they have spread them too thin if they're trying to mow four counties.
And that, that's something we can definitely look into, Darryl, but, um, if they come in as the low bidder, I'm not sure that there's much we can do just through state procurement, procurement laws and things like that. I think we may have to go with low bidder, but I'll check into that and see if that's possible for us to go to the next lowest bidder.
Well, if they're going to issue it all to one person, and then make sure that person has enough.
Has the capability.
Mowing all of, instead of mowing Lee County, then move to Wise County, then to Scott County, or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I, I know that, that the mowing contractor that's doing the secondary routes, who got three different counties, is currently working on two counties at once. Well, you haven't got it, so.
They just need to have enough equipment to mow all three counties instead of mowing one and then move to another and, uh, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, oh yeah, I definitely understand.
Yeah, I would almost expect a plan, you know, and a schedule, you know, for a project type of thing. You know, I would, I would almost expect that to be a part of their contract, you know.
Is that, uh, based on county per county, the, like, the contracts, I mean, were, can, can, can different counties require different mowing equipment?
Uh,
Or is that?
Again, I'm not a contractor specialist, but one question that I had the last time we put out our mowing, uh, contracts, especially for the secondary routes, I asked if we could require them to have sickle bar mowers.
You say?
And I was told that we could not dictate what type of equipment they use, as long as they met the terms of the contract and mow whatever distance they're required to mow on the road.
So, so the contract had to be changed?
Well, you can't dictate means and methods.
Yes, exactly.
None at all?
As long as the work is completed, we can't dictate how they do it.
I was concerned means and methods.
If the equipment they're using is stolen debris on the road, could you dictate that they blow it off the road?
That is dictated. They are supposed to clean it off. And, and I know we have gotten a lot of complaints where that hasn't happened, that's where the contract monitor comes into play. And we're having, we make them go back and do it later, it might not happen as, it might not happen until, you know, as quickly as some people want it, but we do make them go back and get the debris off the road.
Is this the first year we've used this contractor?
Uh, no, we used this contractor in Scott County last year for secondary routes.
Yeah, it's, it's really bad. I noticed the other day on, I think it's six eighty-eight, there is a road sign that says one lane, road ahead, or work being done. It's a VDOT sign that you can't see because the weeds are so high, that's why I don't know what it says, but it is a VDOT sign. And the weeds are really, really bad. One thing is, this summer has been like a tropical climate, and the weeds have grown more quickly. And that should be taken into consideration, because it is a safety hazard when you're pulling out on a, from a secondary road onto a main road, you can't see.
But, and what I would suggest in, in a situation, um, like that, and just for your information, we all, we also brought Mr. Jesse with us, he's the supervisor at the Patonsville, HrB headquarters, so he can go out and look at that, that's in his area. But if there're, if we're in between cycles, like, like I said, our best practices manual states we have to do secondary routes twice a year. With all the rain that we've had, it, it's grown rather quickly, but if we start that second round too early, by the time you get into fall, then it's grown way up, and then we're going to spend all winter with, you know, so we try to time those cycles out to where we get towards the end of growing season and everything's cut down pretty well. But in between then, if there's any side distance issues or anything like that, if they're reported to the one eight hundred four roads, then the area headquarters will go out, go out and take care of any side distance issues that are causing a safety hazard.
Uh, if you have, how, how many tractors would you normally use in a, in Scott, let's say Scott County, since that's a county we live in?
Uh, Scott.
Do you have them in several areas of the county at the same time?
We, we would typically use five from each area headquarters, so five from Patonsville, five from Fort Blackmore. And they might go to a couple of different areas.
And so, like, right now it's September, so, uh, you wait a whole lot later than this, and, you know, the weeds are going to be dead by the time?
No, I mean, I, they're mowing, currently mowing right now, so, um, they'll get everything cut down, and then by that time, the growing will be finished and everything will, I guess, thrive more, so.
Okay, uh, I don't know if this is, since you're talking, we must delve into it. You've closed a couple of, uh, offices, VDOT offices, you know, in Scott County, and I think probably our state representative done a refer, random or a letter or something, is there, uh, can we not do a letter or amendment or something like that in regard to this as well? Uh, in terms of maybe, we need more people back, we need those, we need you back in those facilities, we, uh, that's what I'm hearing.
That was our original letter.
So.
Was to look at the blueprint plan.
Plan, okay.
I, I think I read the article in the Johnson City, for instance.
Uh, I talked to Mr. Kilgore last night, and he said they are looking at some things, they have a huge budget surplus, and I was encouraging him to, he is the majority leader, he has a lot of, he has a lot of cool now in the General Assembly. He said they are looking at some things along the line on VDOT as to some of the funding, so, we'll see how it shakes out, I don't know, hopefully they, they, they can do more than what they're doing, but these guys, I mean, they got the boss like everybody else, and you're going to do what you can do with what you've got.
Well, I, I will also tell the board, and I think Marshall, you and I spoke about this, you know, we, we have hired equipment contractors to supplement VDOT forces. But it, it just so happened during the pandemic, everything, you know, price increases, fuel increases, workers got harder to find, so cost of business for these contractors went, it just skyrocketed. Um, so when it came time to renew contracts, they chose not to renew, so we're in the process of putting these back out to bid, and and once the contracts get filled again, we'll, we'll have some contractors that can help to, you know, supplement our workforce. So currently, right now, it's only the VDOT workforce that, that's able to be out working right now, so. And then, then once we get these contractors back on board, we'll, we'll be able to get more trucks, more employees, more, not employees, but more bodies that help, so.
I, I also want to compliment you, and I told you that on the phone, I want to do it here publicly, but, uh, you know, with a tree we've been fussing about for quite a while, that was stretched all the way across fifty-eight, had already bowed down, it was just a matter of time it come down. Uh, thankfully, uh, that was cut, so, probably some more when you look at it, and, you know, hopefully we can write one day and we can look at some of those issues and see how best approached to.
Yeah, I, I, I think Darryl testified his, Mr. Aaron, any, anytime a board member wants to get with, well, it'd be Eric now, but I'm more than happy to come along. Anytime you're having issues in your area and he wants to come out and look at them with you, more than happy to spend the day riding around with you, looking at concerns you have. So, we appreciate you doing it. Yeah, it's any time.
Takes time, we appreciate you doing it, doing it.
Yeah.
And just an update on the letter, the governor sent it to the highway commissioner, and it did get sent back down to Tabitha Crowder, that's over the Bristol district, and I have met with her, and they're, they're working through some things as well.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's most about the rustic road stuff, how you've been, wasn't it?
It was about that and about the blueprint plan.
About the blueprint plan.
But the letter, you know, went to the governor and then made its way back to Bristol.
Can you just briefly talk what you shared with me about the rustic roads? You know, looking, you know, you just.
That had been completed in the past.
Put tar over it to put another layer of.
Well, in, in the past, the, the way that we would do a rural rustic route, we would come in, we would do the widening, we would do all the green, drainage improvements, and then it would get, the, the type of surface it, that got put on it was what is called tar and gravel, tar and chip, uh, some people call it surface treatment, which is just a layer of stone, a layer of, uh, liquid asphalt, a layer of stone, layer of liquid asphalt. And, and then the idea was to come three, four, five years later and then pave it over top of it. So what we have started doing now is paving those instead of going to the surface treatment, so any rural rustic project that gets completed from here forward will be paved. And, and I think Todd and his crew, they've actually been out paving on J. Neil Circle, which should finish that rural rustic project. Uh, but now, and, and that can be some things that we can go out and look at, uh, for the ones that were completed previously that may have gotten surface treatment on it, it's probably time to try to start getting some of those on, on the paving schedule. And, and just so you guys are aware, we, we actually purchased, in the Wise residency, we purchased a paving machine. So now our guys have the capability to go out and do some paving. So just to, you know, we can go out and pave miles and miles of road like some of the bigger contractors can, but we can take care of some smaller paving projects.
But again, that cuts manpower. It, it takes, it takes employees to do that, and then that takes away from something else. Uh, it's, there's, there's a big problem, I think, that, that we're going to have to fix.
Yeah, you've just got a lot of roads and a lot of unpaid roads, you know, also in Scott County, as you very well know, and then with your very limited capabilities.
Scott County's a very large county, it's.
With unpaid roads, it's, it's, we're sinking.
But, uh, you guys will be left in good hands. Eric came from Loudoun County, which is the only county that's got more gravel rates than Scott County, so he's, he's very familiar with taking care of gravel roads.
If, if you have any, uh, asphalt leftover on any project that you're doing, I would like to add, this is, I thought it was unfair at the time, and it still is a real issue. I think about it every time I drive it. My neighbor worked for decades for VDOT, and road number six twenty-four was paved within feet of his driveway, and he was left with all the dust. And I, if you have any leftover, I would like for you to put it in front of his house, because he deserves that.
Is that, uh, there near Beeline?
Yes, it's, it's on Beeline Road, it's six twenty-four. It was paved, the first part of the road was paved with, and stopped within feet of one of your retirees who dedicated decades to VDOT. And now he's left with the gravels, the dust, and everything, when it was paved within feet of his driveway, and it's just not right. So if you have any leftover, I would like for it to be put in front of his house.
We'll, we'll definitely look into what.
Take a look at that.
I mean, I, I don't know what happened in the past, that was obviously before my time, but we'll look in. but we'll look into, to what happened and what can be done.
Yeah, I mean, I'm his neighbor, but I would prefer he gets pavement in front of his house because of his dedication to VDOT for decades. He's retired from there. And he was slighted when the pavement came within feet of his driveway. And I just think that's, that's just not right. So if you have any leftover on any of your projects, put it in front of his house. Thank you.
Anything else for the VDOT folks?
Uh, you know, you and I looked at that place on 71 and, uh, the, where Mr. Vickers lives there at JMP. You said something about you was going to have to be in touch with him to get some sort of a right of way.
Yeah, we'll make a, uh, right of entry. I have my guys at the headquarters working on getting that. So I'll have to touch base with them.
Well, if, he, he'll be hard to get rid of.
To get rid of.
To get a hold of.
I hope he don't watch it.
Think I don't watch the same, apologize.
But anyway, uh, uh, he's more than willing to let you go in wherever. Uh, if he needs to sign something, if I have to take it to him, uh, I'm more than willing to do that. Uh, just whatever we need to do to get that fixed. There's, there's pretty much, I, I've not seen it myself, but there's about the same issue on Beola where Sylvia Hall lives, is that still Midway Road?
Yes.
Okay. On Midway Road, I, I, I'd like to get you some more information. Uh, the road's doing the exact same thing. It's, it's, it's washing off, it needs some sort of riffraff put around a drain tile or something. I'll, I'll get you some more, uh, info. Do you have a card?
Yes.
Okay, well, uh, if you wouldn't care to hand those out, I'll, I'll, I'll get some more information about that.
Now, the number on the bottom of my cell number, the office number is not current right now.
Eric, what is your position again?
Maintenance manager.
Same as Wade's.
Did he say the one?
Someone?
Go on the bottom of the cell.
And I, I appreciate you Wade for coming out. You know, you, you and you guys, you know, we've spent five or six hours, you know, just, uh, looking at things and that, that, that means a lot. I know you're covered up, you need more manpower, you need more money to, to do things and hopefully, hopefully that'll come, I hope.
I mean, Eric and I work really closely together, so.
Yeah.
And I'm sure I'll still be around.
I've still got your phone number, listen to Jake.
Anything else for the VDOT folks?
I, I just have to say, uh, you know, Wade's been very good, you know, in my discussions with him, whatever issues or projects to, you know, jump on top of it. And I appreciate that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember who it was that said it, but that you're here to serve the people of the county. Yeah, I mean, I feel the same about my job. I want, I want to do anything I can to help the people of the counties that I serve within the regulations that, you know, the agency puts on me. But I'll, I'll do anything I can to help.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Hope it didn't beat you up too bad.
This one was a lot easier than the last one.
Let's say bye, Kim, end break.
Transported to Camp Leaver, Virginia where he received his basic training whereas Mr. Collins' mathematical skills, he was attached to the newly formed 87th Chemical Mortar Battalion. This battalion fought their way, a lot of battles here at Mench, especially in the Battle of the Bugs, and he also was awarded the following decorations, American Theater ribbon, European African Middle Eastern ribbon, one Silver Star, good conduct medal, distinguished unit badge, bronze arrow, and World War II Victory Medal. He went on to serve in the town, he worked for many years, the Clinchville Coal Company, he served at town of Dungannon and the position of mayor and town council for 25 years. So anyway, he was, he went to church where I did, I've known him all my life, grew up with his boys. And the last part here is direct to be resolved at Scott County, that's Scott County in accordance with the requirements section, 33.2 dash 213 of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request at the Commonwealth Transportation Board, non-instruction number 1038 located on Route 65, Second Creek Highway in Scott County as the Jack D. Collins Memorial Bridge. Further being resolved that the Scott County agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs calling attention to this naming. So anyway, I don't know of anyone that would be more honored to me to present something like that to a person of his stature and the commitment he had made to that area and with his World War II service, one of the greatest generation folks that they were known for. And so, we have this resolution to do, any other comments here, your thoughts about this name, bridge naming, anyone?
I think it's a great idea, you know, as a commander of the American Legion post, we've done some of those dedication services and so I think it's a great honor for that to happen. And if you may have other discussion, but I'd be more than happy to make a motion to do that.
Okay. All right, and also we got there's an amount that the county has to pay, do you know roughly, freedom what that is?
I think it's between two and $300, it's not a great amount.
Right. If VDOT installs the sign, they will have the sign covered, they have an unveiling service there at the bridge when they unveil it and so, which would come out of our contingency fund?
That's probably do the American Legion, I would imagine.
I hope.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
It'll be several months away, we have to send the resolution to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for approval, so it usually takes a while.
Probably in early spring, I would think, maybe late winter, but probably that long before we get it done. I just might, what it's taken before the other bridges, it takes that long to get done and get VDOT on board to get them to set the signs and all of that, so. And if you want to go ahead and if you want to make a motion on it to include the three hundred, up to $300 from American Legion.
Yes, so I would include that amount.
To come out to $300, to come out of the contingency fund, is that right? Yep. Our Mr. Tipp has made a motion on this, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Herring's second, any other discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, so I think this is very, very important. Next item is item 12, the American Rescue Plan Act projects, Ms. Sarnes.
We just have one for your consideration, we would like authorization to do an A and E procurement for demolition of two buildings on the county property that are past their useful life and set a deadline for articles to be removed from those buildings by the Sheriff's Office and the Circuit Court Clerk.
Okay. All right, so we can authorize this to proceed with this plan as described by Ms. Sarnes, and again, we'll have to see the cost of it and what that will be yet.
Have they figured out a place to put their storage stuff?
I've talked to both, the Circuit Court Clerk, it'll take him less than a day to get his items out and he will be petitioning the court for destruction of the ones that can be destructed. And the Sheriff's Office, it'll take them probably anywhere four to six months, they have a lot more stuff, files and stuff, they're going to try to see what can be done away with based on our retention laws, and they'll have to find space for the other items.
All right, any other discussion? And then we'd authorize this to progress and it would be funded through that Art Rescue Fund, I guess is what you would call it, any folks serving on that, you all been well with this doing this. But anyway, and so, need a motion to proceed, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipp made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brickley's second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Art.
The next item is item 13, the Fugit Hollow Lane abandonment discontinuance, Ms. Sarnes, if you would.
The property owner contacted me last week, that owns the very last property on Fugit Hollow Lane, and that is off of Goldman's Branch up in Upper Hiltons, and she has her property for sale, it was her mother's, she lives in Texas, and they do have a contract on it with closing coming up next month, but I know this is a long process and I have relayed that to her as well. Mr. Dingus and myself went out last Friday and drove this road, and it's basically a narrow one lane, not much traffic, there's, or no traffic probably, there's one cabin and a camper that's set up on the half mile of Fugit Hollow Lane before you get to where there's no maintenance whatsoever at the end. So I'm still working to get some more details, I'm going to work with the realtor, I have his information to make sure that we're looking at the very end part. But I wanted to go ahead and put this on the agenda and bring it to your attention to see if you want me to continue working on it with the property owner and the realtor to, and VDOT, to come up with a plan for abandonment or discontinuance. The person that's under contract for the property lives in Johnson City, and that's one of the contingents of them purchasing the property, they don't want people being able to continue coming on to the property.
Would the whole road be included or just a part of it?
I think just the end, yeah, because there's probably half a mile there before you get to the, where it's just impassable with a regular vehicle.
Okay, so is, does that go on to the property or does it go?
That's why I'm waiting on a call back from the realtor, I need to make sure that the one lane that's, that you can't get a car on is where that starts.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
We entertain a motion to allow Ms. Sarnes to progress with this, do we have a motion? Given what she said was a lot, anyway, do we have a motion for her to proceed?
I'll move.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Summit, or second.
Your second, all right, second, second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, goodkeeping, Ms. Vickers.
Please appropriate $6,650.82 to Animal Control Special Services, 351-00-3170 for money received from public affairs, Sheriff's Office. Appropriate $1,748.61 to park golf course merchandise for resale, 71110615 for reimbursements received. And appropriate $159.45 to county administrators, vehicle equipment supplies, fuel, 12110-6008 for an insurance claim. Appropriate $1,530.83 to Sheriff's Office for repair and maintenance of vehicles, 31200-6009 for an insurance claim. Appropriate $1,065 to Sheriff's Office salaries, 31200-1100 for reimbursement received. And appropriate $81.47 to Sheriff's Office FICA, 31200-2100 for reimbursement received. And that's all of the appropriations.
Do we have a motion on the appropriations as described by Ms. Vickers?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipp has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brickley's second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And please accept Sheriff's Office DCJS-JAG LOLE grant number FFY21, and if accepted, please establish expense cover for police supplies, 4-1-31359-6010. And accept Sheriff's Office DCJS for resource officers, FY23 grant 23-927-C for continuation of five positions at $312,347. And accept Sheriff's Office DCJS for resource officers, FY23 grant 23-211-A for two positions at $124,939. And accept Sheriff's Office DCJS for resource officers, FY23 grant 23-248-A for two positions at $143,952.
Does this go for salaries, what, I mean, is this grants for their salaries or equipment or?
Salaries.
Salaries. Does that go to the school system where they are involved with their salaries? Does that go to them or how does it?
Yes, the school system and the Sheriff's Office conduct the interviews and hire the positions. There's no match for fiscal year '23, but there is a match for fiscal year '24, and the school system has agreed to pay the match. But the county still has to pay vehicles, uniforms, guns, any other equipment that they need.
Is this for addition of officers or is it for salaries from last year?
Four of them are additional. The bottom two are additional.
Do they get special training?
Yes, they have a special.
So, they get special training in case a shooter comes in?
They're also certified officers.
That they will go in and take care of the shooter and not stand around.
I think it's a.
You can always guarantee that, but you hope.
I think it's a 40-hour school, but they are certified law enforcement officers.
And that's important.
First, first off.
It is important that they, you know, that they're ready, that they're ready to take care of these children, to keep them safe, because I know, if I had a little child, I'd be concerned sending them to schools in today's society. So I'm glad that they get some special training and.
With schools I drive by, you always see the vehicle there, so they know the law enforcement is there, and that's important.
And I think this puts one in every school.
Puts one in every school.
That's good, I'm glad, I know when I first came on the road and I don't.
It's expensive, but still it's worth it, we got to do it, and so.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
All right, we have the grants announced here by Ms. Vickers, do we have a motion to accept and proceed?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Brickley has made a, Mr. Brickley has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herring's second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Dan. Next item is appointments, Ms. Tina.
You have one appointment tonight to the Heart of Appalachia Board, Keith Wilson is currently serving in that position, and the Scott County Tourism Committee has recommended that he be reappointed.
Do we have any nominations for the Heart of Appalachia Board?
I'll nominate Keith Wilson.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination ceased and voted that nomination.
Do we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that one.
All right, Ms. Agnes's second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the county attorney item, Ms. Kegel.
I don't have anything today, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kegel? Thank you, Mr. John Weldon, appreciate what you do. The next item is claims, Ms. Sarnes.
You have your green sheet in your packets. Early claims for the month total $212,538.70. Total claims, current claims $278,208.58 for a grand total of $490,747.28. Some of the larger ones for this month, you'll see on your list, Addington Oil for July Fuel, $27,193. And Nicholsville Rescue Squad, $32,566, that's part of their fiscal year '23 contribution. Tyler Technologies, $93,522.22 for licensing, maintenance, and subscription. And the Sheriff's Flooring Project has been completed, so Winoghr and Sons had that contract, $27,866. Your general fund balance after claims is $4,040,909.17. So just need approval for $490,747.28.
I'll make a motion, we pay the bills.
All right, Ms. Agnes has made a motion, if we pay the bills, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipp's second, any discussion? All favorables send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Still, we're a little bit ahead of where we were this time last year and the year before a little bit, so not a whole lot, but we're doing better than we were. All right, a whole lot better than 2020.
I do have some miscellaneous items, I just wanted to note, the Kenny Fannin Bridge dedication is Saturday, September 17th at 11:00 a.m. at the bridge.
Excuse me, Ms. Sarnes, that is the bridge where you turn it into my?
Yeah, I believe so, that's the one I have in mind.
Well, I did too, and I thought, I hope that's the right one, of course, I'll go way off after they get the signs, I'm not sure I'm going to the right bridge.
Yeah, they have the date, so the signs will probably go up next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
If you could give, please, the date again.
September seventeenth, that's next Saturday, at eleven a.m.
Next page.
And Mr. Dingus is gonna be handling that bridge dedication for me.
You still want me to do the resolution?
Sure, we have that framed and ready, and I also have signs for the family that match what's gonna be unveiled.
Will you send me?
Sure.
While I can break up on everything.
Oh, it's eleven a.m., on seventeen, correct.
Correct.
It's a big, I put it in my phone, and I take it out, and I put it in, but I can't take it out, so it's gotta stay.
And I'll also verify that that's the correct bridge, or you'll, I can give y'all directions if you wanna attend.
Duffield days, like Saturday, they had the parade and stuff, and Kenny Phanen's name's mentioned a lot, and so I think it's very worthy that they're doing that in honor of him, and he was the, I talked to Kay Jesse about how that came about several years ago, and he was, he was really the spark plug for it, Kenny laws, and, you know, but anyway, he was, he was the pusher behind that, and it's grown to be a pretty big deal, kind of probably the biggest parade stuff in the county is there, so. The whole event is great.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, is it?
I'm just gonna move on without me.
Nah. I wouldn't dare do that.
And next, just an update, the Daniel Boone Way Site, we're gonna have some construction in that area, starting tomorrow through next week. If you're watching and you live in the Daniel Boone area and you use the Way Site, you will have dumpsters moved to the parking area on twenty-three that VDOT owns, so just a public service announcement. And we also need two board members to volunteer for the Courthouse Facilities Committee.
Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
All right. I don't mind to serve.
Mr. Dingus will be in touch with your meeting day, it's gonna be coming up pretty soon.
All right, it's more of that unpaid duties that you are going to perform.
Oh, yeah.
Freebies. Freebies.
That's all I can.
Ms. Starnes, can I mention the Household Hazardous Ways?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Household Hazardous Ways Pickup Day will be on September the seventeenth, Saturday, and it's held down at the Gate City Flea Market Parking Area, from nine to three p.m. People in, out there could find a advertisement in the paper in the next couple of weeks about what they can bring, or on our website. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Starnes?
That's all I have.
I wouldn't dare ever catch you off. So next item, Ms. Lane, she got that done. We will have a presentation here, by Mr. Phil Gores here, also, we're going to close session a little bit when we get through, but if you would, John.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and appreciate your service and what you're done with the, what you've been talking about this morning, about mom, transportation in jail, almost the making of a good country song, but you know, you missed a couple items, but you almost made it.
Well, maybe you can sing it for us.
Yeah, but you put together your.
Probably not. So, kinda a recap, you know, of course, the Temple City Expansion, remind you of that, of course, announced was last year, but they're still working on it. And that's set probably to be finished sometime this month, it might be first of, first of next month, it's closed, so that investment was sixteen point seven million, twenty-five new jobs, so a great expansion for the county. And here's what they're adding on, which is to the left, as you're facing the building, and large area, just cut off up here, hilarious, sorry. Or, this is a picture from the rear, so it's the right side that they're adding on to this facility. Makes it the largest manufacturing facility in the B.C. region, the Seven County region, and probably have to go up to Wesfle to get one as large as this, this is a large manufacturing facility, and, and the fourth expansion that they have actually accomplished here. They not only own this building, but they also own another building, it's beside Kumatsu in the industrial park, and you can see that at the back of the industrial park, that's where, right across the road from Kumatsu. Another expansion, of course, was announced last year in November, was the VFP expansion, they're not finished with this as well, but that, again, that was a seven point two million investment and thirty new jobs for Scott County. And this is some work that they have done on that, and they continue to work on the facility inside and out, so, just a picture of that. Another project we continue to work on, focus on, of course, is the Riverside Development, approved funding for a new site in the areas, eight hundred thousand. Right now, it's tier, a level according to Virginia Economic Development Partnership, they have a consultant that looks at these, and puts them in a certain tier ranking, so five would be the highest. To get to, to a tier five, we're gonna need to add another site, because we don't have any sites that are developed at the Riverside now. So we have that much approved funding, what we plan to do is work with VEDP and the Virginia Business Ready Site Program that the, the state put a lot of funding in for this fiscal year, and hopefully we'll apply for funding, and they dropped the acres, it's fifty contiguous acres minimum for our region, for Go Virginia One, One Region, and Go Virginia Region Two, so that's fifty acres for us, a hundred acres for the rest of the state. It's hard for us to come up with a hundred acre site and try to develop that in, in our regions down here. So we can re, we can apply, we applied the last time, and we weren't, wasn't successful because we fell below the hundred acres. So hopefully we'll be successful in getting that. Application's due September thirteenth, and we're working with Lynn Westco on the application, and we'll get that completed and turned in. The former T-Tech building is now the VEDP website, we'll call it the Riverside Technology Building, it is kind of a unique building, we continue to market, we've had, you know, a couple of prospects look, look at it, but, you know, it's, it's built for technology, that's why it was built, so we continue to look at that angle to try to get another tenant to, to move into that facility. And B.C. is helping us do that as well, they help us market it, and the state help, is helping us market it. The state has actually been down a couple of times with their representatives in looking at the building, and kinda giving us advice on what, you know, is potential there, what kind of projects we should be looking for. So Riverside Investment, you're, the initial investment from the county on the Riverside was two million dollars, and, you know, you talk about, well, what's the return? The return right now is, there's nine million additional funding that has been received for that site through grants, you know, we got broadband, we got all the infrastructure there, so it's ready to go. So that's a, that's a great return on investment for what the initial investment the county did years ago. So we'll continue to work on the Riverside as well. Site to be developed is to the right side of the road, in behind the Riverside Discount Tire, close to the cemetery then, it's right behind the Riverside Discount Tire, so right in that area there.
Is that right behind the bank, John?
It's a little over on the bank, but the bank is on the right side too, yeah, so the bank, Riverside Discount Tire, yeah, right, right at that side. We also working with the DMME, and this is funded through the Virginia Department of Energy now, and the total budget for the Devil's Bathtub Project is three hundred fifty-three thousand four thirty. We've worked with the engineering, and we had an engineer, they had to do an EVA document, which is very extensive, and they had to go through that process, and we got the notice to proceed, and we're working with ACC, and that's Appalachian Conservation Corps, they're, they're doing the trail work, but they encountered some delays, and based on what y'all already said in your meeting, it's on staffing, you know, they've had staffing leave and trying to get people to do the work, so hopefully they'll get started soon. We also did a invitation event for the Devil's Bathtub Trailhead, that's on the National Forest property, but that is the parking area, the, the parking area on the left as you go up in there, so it's right beyond our parking area that the county did. So we're working with them, we've got bids in on that, but they're over the budget right now, we're gonna work with ACC over the next couple of weeks and see if there's any additional funding that they have, that they're not using on the trail, that maybe could be swapped to this parking area, so that's what we're doing now. Small business support, we continue to support small business through the chamber, that's we support ribbon cuttings, the RBAG loan program I talked about in a minute, we also did a how-to Airbnb workshop, if you're interested in that, I can send you a link to that, if you're interested in renting some space out in your home, or you have a home that's vacant that you wanna get stuff and rent out. A great concept, a lot of people are doing it now, there's a couple downtown, gate seated now, but then there's a couple others throughout the county, so if you're interested, just let me know. Also assisted the Mount the Empire Community College Summer Institute Program, and we did that by providing lunch for those teachers in the region to kinda, they come to Duffield and to talk about manufacturing and talk about industry, so they get, they're hands-on, I mean, they're, they're seeing the students first, and hopefully that's a, you know, they can guide those students in that there are some manufacturing careers. So they did tour the plants down there, so they can see what kind of skills they will need and what jobs are available. We also applied for a potential APID grant, and that's been approved for small business, and that, that total project cost, and that was for a farmer's market to support the ag component in the county, and that's twenty-five thousand for Virginia Department of Ag, and of course, twenty-five thousand from the ARPA funds, and Jeremy and I have been working with the town and the park to see how to move forward on that and get that started. And hopefully we can get something and structure up, we hope, in the next year. In the RBAG loan program, we, this is actually the third time that we went to Rural Development, and they have approved funding, and that's because of the success of the program. We've had thirty-six loans approved to date, twenty-five thousand dollars is our max on a small business loan, we've loaned out six hundred fifty thousand dollars, and some of that's course returned, so we can loan back out, and that attributes to eighty-one employees, five of those tourism-related, twenty-two retail, nine support businesses. And we have did, recently, this year, received an additional one hundred sixty-three thousand from Rural Development to replenish those lending funds, so we can actually lend to more small business. So if you see anybody, I'm sure that you know of, you know, just those that are in your area that have gone through this program, the Grain Bin's, one of those, and Marshalls, they talk about an ice creamery up in your area, in Duffield, the, the new store in Duffield, that name escapes me, I don't know what it is, but.
Boutique, two cents.
Yeah, there you go.
Opposite either.
The seven six boutique.
Two seven six boutique, and it's just great to see that, the many people throughout the county that, one, they wanna start a business, and they're wanting to grow that business in Scott County, it's great. So here's some ribbon cuttings, there's a boutique, two seven six, and close quarters there, the M.B., and then the Grain Bin, those are all this year, and some of those will go to B.C. to get seed capital funding as well. There's our information on a couple of things we have supported, that had Airbnb, and cultivated entrepreneurship in our, in Scott County. And pictures from the luncheon where we fed the teachers that actually toured the manufacturing facilities. Also applied for a grant to TBA Workforce Invest, which requires a match, the total project cost on this is fifty-four thousand one four, one hundred fourteen dollars, and we also work with Mount the Empire Community College, supporting the manufacturing, to not only give, hopefully get more skilled labor, but also give those that maybe that dropped out of workforce and need a second chance, and they can get this skill by going to Mount the Empire and taking that skill. And it's, it'd be great to get those back in the workforce, and with our low, low unemployment rate, the loss that I've seen in a long time, they need to have more skilled workers in the workforce at this, at this point in time. And the grants update, just to kinda give you a recap on the ARPA, I know y'all, you know, did a lot for the small businesses, but, you know, it's about a, almost a million dollars between what Scott County did and what Lynn Westco Regional Grants, where Fried and I helped sit on that committee to talk about those grants as well recently, but that's, that's great to invest that back into our small businesses. And all over the county too, as there's the grant dispersions. B.C. to seed capital, since fifteen Scott County businesses have actually applied and received grants from that since twenty-seventeen, and that's hundred forty, four hundred forty-five thousand, they have been invested in the county from just the region, from Virginia Coal Development. So that program's still moving, and we'll, we'll have a couple, maybe two or three that will go in October of this year, and they'll be presented to B.C. and try to get funding in fifty years as well. And we still market, of course, our assets, our assets being Duffield, you know, you think about the Kruger Rotex Center, which is an asset, the, the insurance value that the insurance comes around and looks at, what the value of that property is, right now, it's currently at nine point six million, as it, that is an asset, you don't owe any money on that building. Talk about this, this building here, the insurance value on this building is six point five million, there's not a lot owed left on this building. So that's a fifty thousand square foot building you have, that's a sixty-five thousand square foot building. The land that, that Kruger Rotex owns, that was just sitting there, it was just a mountain back in the day, sixty-five acres that was actually given to the EDA to do something with, and that's, that's one of the things, plus the Daniel Boone Interpretation Center was another building that was added later on. So we have sites developed there, sites that, you know, we could actually look for a, put a building on later, if a manufacturing prospect or a technology prospect came, we can look at putting some type of building there. Right now, prospects that we have, you know, received a request for information on, they were, they're mainly looking for a building, or, because they wanna get in there quickly. So we don't have a building that's really vacant now, that's actually owned by the county, except for technology. So if you're looking at manufacturing, somebody in Scott County look for manufacturing, there's hardly any in the whole region. So, I mean, the EDA's trying to look at that, and how to resolve that, and, and move forward on that, maybe we need to look at that in the future. But that's where we are, we wanna market all the assets that we have, and we have a lot of assets in the county, and those assets are some that people can't take away, and we gotta look at that as our assets. Any questions?
TeleTech building, do, does the county own the building?
County has a loan on the building, we don't own the building.
If we paid the loan off, we would?
You'd have to get approval from the EDA Board and the B.C. Board to make that happen. And it was built for economic development, so, and for job creation and for investment, so that would be up to those two boards to make that determination.
You said you had two prospects are looking at it, are they wanting to rent it or buy it, or what?
Those, one was rental, one was buy. Still, just, you know, we turn over everything we can, try to market the building, and try to get somebody in as quick as we can. Sometimes it's a slow process, but it's, it takes time. Took us probably about five years to get TeleTech in there, we worked on them a long time.
How about the appraisal on Roberts, Bayes, have you got that yet?
We have, he's not finished the appraisal, even though we've given him the information on the, the, the last thing he was asking for was the address, and we, we didn't have a, technically, we didn't have an address on both buildings, so we've got an address on both the, the rear building and the front building.
So, so that's doable, I mean, that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's up to, again, up to the board, and it ain't up to me.
Yeah, I have all the things I had on my, I wanted to ask you too about that.
John, I'm still confused on what we own, if you're facing Roberts, we own the building behind him.
You're, actually, if you're facing Roberts, the county owns the four garages that are at the road.
On the left of the building.
Yeah, on the left of the building, right, the new garage. Yeah, on the left of the building, right, the new garages and the building behind.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and the buildings to the left. Those buildings, those two buildings to the left.
That are rented, yeah.
Yeah, that are leased, but not the bank.
I was curious about the one across from the Mexican place. That's not ours.
No. But directly across is to the right.
Almost directly to the, to the left of the cemetery.
The upper building next to the cemetery?
That's where Webber City is getting tired. Right across the road is where Webber City is getting tired. That's, yeah, they join the cemetery on the, that side in the back.
John, back a few months ago, we talked about a consultant for retail consultant. Did that ever move, you know, if we hired them or...
We've not, we've not hired anybody yet. Waiting on the EDA to make that, to proceed with that. Tell me to go ahead with that. They know about it, but we're just, they may have pulled it through yet.
That's a three-year contract they were looking with them with.
Right, right.
Try to, they know the ins and outs of people, looking for site location for retail.
Yeah, they give you all the data that's behind that, yes.
Anything else for Mr. Kilgore?
That, that new site that you're talking about, great place. There would be a lot to level that with, pretty level that in.
No, you, there would have to be some, you'd have, there'd be a lot of earthwork to move there to make that. You know, what we're looking for is a ten, a minimum 10 acre site. So we would have to move, one, one objective we want to do is move the dirt from the road that's just piled up there and then move it back and then put some over there. Yes, and put some over there. And then move that where the pond used to be back, move some of that back too. You'd have to move a lot. So there would be some earthwork involved there.
But the first part's pretty well leveling. The front part?
Yeah, right. Yeah, the front on the right and left is pretty, as long as you get behind that first hill. Yeah, it is, you're right.
Hopefully something will happen there quickly. Get a prospect, that's always good and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope so too. And thank you all for your service. I know it's our job and I wouldn't want to be sitting there being the late person.
All right, anything else for Mr. Kilgore? We're going to closed session with him. We'll do that in a few minutes, but anything else for him on his presentation? All right, down to comments, requests from the board. Mr. Jeter, you have anything?
Yes, thank the staff for all the good work they do. And one more thing is trash along the road. I noticed there's a lot of it needs to be picked up. Are they still getting people out to pick up the trash?
No.
They ain't getting nobody?
There's nobody to take them out.
What about the litter man? What's he doing?
I don't think he's been involved with that in the past. That's always been a sheriff's deputy. That's took inmates out.
You're talking about the Scott Service workers? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I was talking about the litter control officer.
The litter control officer administers the assigned highway program, which people are assigned a stretch of highway to pick up. And he has a number of them assigned up that they have to pick up. A lot of the road is near the house because whatever reason they were in that program for also suspended devices, as is the case most, most of the time. But he doesn't take crews to the signs. The Scott Services will take the crew out and do a roll on the sign.
I just noticed there's a lot of trash getting along the road, some of the roads down there where the mowers come through, they just mow it up.
Comes everywhere.
Make a mess. Frisco Yards got a lot of trash on it.
I can talk to Mr. Kugnauer about if he has someone in that area that he can assign that road to. And also Scott Services, see if they can take a crew down Frisco Yard Road.
Add 72 and it's bad on 72. We were just bragging about how good the roads were, had been picked up there a couple of months ago. And right now, it's, somebody's lost trash or something and it's...
You're talking about right past Midway Market?
Yes, right there.
Somebody lost a bunch, dude?
Trash bag was lost.
Yes. And then, I don't know what that area is called right there, but Michael Zinger usually lives, that little stretch of land right there. Somebody's lost a trash bag right there too and it's everywhere.
You saying that, I'll come back to you in a minute, but I'm up quite a bit around 72 and on a Wednesday I picked up the trash myself. Modeled on Saturday, I had 23 new pieces of trash from Wednesday to Saturday. Did pull it out. Some of it blows out pickup trucks too, but anyway, it's, a lot of it was bottles and cans and did not blow up, somebody had thrown out.
A lot of it is where they stop at McDonald's or Pal's or wherever and when they get done eating, out the window they go.
I know. I don't know how you, how do you get people to do the right thing? You can't. If they're not going to do it, it's just hard to police it and get them to do the right thing, so.
You have to give them a ticket. Give them a ticket. They can get you.
All right, Mr. Tenny, what is it, police call that moment?
Yeah, just like, I'd like to thank the staff for all that you do. At some point, I think like we did here at the county offices, the flagpole out front, I think at the courthouse would be, they have the little small flags that are underneath, tucked under underneath and, you know, the flag is a symbol and represents the soul of America, something I would like to see put out in the front in the little garden on a larger flagpole. And you put both the, the national flag, the US flag and the state flag could be flown on it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Karen?
Appreciate what everybody does. I guess the biggest thing, just want to, you know, I think we need to stay on track with this VDOT deal. That, that is going to have to be some changes made in Richmond with how that's being regulated. You know, with, with those kids coming from Twin Springs, you know, I, however we need to do that, I'd like for their letters to go to them too. I'm not saying we need to, however we need to do that, I'd like for those letters to be sent to Mr. Kilgore and Mr. P and, you know, all three, just to show, you know, that it's, it's, it's a real thing. And I, I invite any of them here to come and look at it personally because, you know, if, in, in the route we're going, in five or six years, we're not going to have any roads. You know, it's, it's destroying not only our roads, but it's destroying private property. There's thousands of tons of gravel and dirt that's ruining pasture land. And, you know, we, we've got to get a hold on it. But anyway, I just want to make, make sure we have a way to forward those letters to them too.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion that we forward those letters from the government class of Twin Springs to Delegate Kilgore, Senator P and Governor Yanke.
If Mr. Karen made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Just asking a second. All favorables sent out?
Aha.
Opposed, I vote a half so. Opposed. Motion Karen. Anything else, Mr. Karen?
No.
Mr. Rick?
Don't, don't have anything except say appreciate all of you and the people that show up to help us out each week and especially Jeff just walked out with his backpack, because that's kind of the comfort, you know, he's sitting back there. I appreciate you.
Okay. Mr. Rick?
I don't really have anything to add. I appreciate the county employees for all the help that they've given me over the last month.
What's happening?
I appreciate all the, I too appreciate all the staff and all the folks that, you know, like you said, show up to help us set up here because sometimes it is, we do feel like punching bags up here and it does get a little frustrating. But I do appreciate all of the, you know, it takes a lot to actually sit here to, to know what we know, to know the historical pieces on the, on the tax rates and things like that, the background information that we have to learn in order to be able to make the decisions that we make. We're not just ever shooting in the dark. You know, every decision I feel like we make, we make with a, you know, eyes wide open type attitude. So just like to, you know, add that to that. So it is, it is, you know, the gentleman talked about looking in the mirror. You know, I do that. I do that because I, my heart is, is here. I want to help make a difference. I want to help be that person that, you know, does make the county better and we are setting the county up for success later on. I do want to be that person. But, I don't know, I just appreciate everything that everybody does and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank the staff too. I know a lot of stuff had to happen this past year, it's been tough with the Equalization Board and going, two Equalization Boards going through that. And Fred and all of you have, I know it's been frustrating to deal with and I do my hats off to all of you that's made this happen. And the folks come, they were real, it's right. Their concerns are as legitimate as you'll ever hear. And so, I mean, fixed incomes and trying to pay their taxes and, because I don't wear the N, I mean, it's, it is, it's hard, but thank you all the staff.
Danny, who, just ask a real quick question on the, we set the tax rate today and so this thing should move forward hopefully with the taxation department with no issues.
The tax bills? Is that what you're talking about? The deadline?
Yeah.
Um, the Department of Taxation had to grant the Commissioner of Revenue an extension. So they're working diligently to get things turned over to the Treasury where there won't be a deadline delay. But I heard this morning, right before I come in the meeting, there's some issues with some of the work from the Board of Equalization as far as calculations and such, it's going to have to be worked through with, with them and with the lady that's inputting the changes into the software. So I can't guarantee that, no.
Where's the lady from that's putting it in?
She works for Stonewall. That's the software that's used.
State, state?
I believe so, yes.
State.
All right. Going into closed session. What do we have? I don't, uh, did John need to go into closed session? I thought he said something about that the other day. Am I missing something?
That's what I thought too.
Anyway.
He does. Do you want me to go see?
Yeah, but he can see what, we got to, we got to say what we're going in for, so.
He may, he may already be back here.
Well, he may be, but we got to know what we're going in for so we can make it part of the motion and, and, I think I know, but I want to make sure, I don't want to get drunk if we go in there, we're going to talk about what we go in for. So make sure we get it right out here before we go in there.
Sheriff, we were bragging on you when you went out.
Anyway, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Look, sorry I go out there and make your phone call. I don't know.
No, no. Sorry, no problem. Just kind of comforting knowing you're back there.
Your presence is definitely appreciated.
Having me here might like to do.
These days you never know, do you?
Be too safe anymore.
Perspective industry in Weber City area.
Okay. All right, perspective industry in Weber City area. So we will need a, we have one item to go into closed session for. Do we have a motion?
What?
So Mr. Jeter made a motion.
All seconded.
You're tipped in second. This board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A. 8.5 Perspective Industry in Weber City. So we have a motion second. All favorables sent out?
Aha.
Opposed? Opposed.
The Scott County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmatively recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and for as section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors if such closed meeting was conducted before meeting with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that the best of each member's knowledge on only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. Need a motion to go back into open session.
So will Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call by our clerk, Ms. Barnes.
Mr. Jeter.
Yes.
Mr. Tipton.
Yes.
Mr. Heron.
Yes.
Mr. Breckin.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Ms. Hood.
Yes.
Ms. Addington.
Yes.
We are now back in open session. One thing come out of that is we need a motion to for the county to support this moral obligation not to exceed $6 million for a prospective company working in conjunction with the EDA and the Virginia Tobacco Commission. Do we have a motion to approve this moral obligation?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
All right, Mr. Breckin made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second. In discussion.
Can we add Project Delta to that?
Project Delta, yes. Will you put that in your motion, Mr. Breckin?
Yes.
Okay, your motion has been amended. We have a motion and a second. All three of us saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, so we have done all of that. Next meeting will be October the 5th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. Any comments before we adjourn? Month is